Down to agenda item number nine, this is our carbon dioxide removal information and discussion.
Mayor Vice Mayor and Council Nicole Antonopoulos Sustainability Director. In anticipation of a robust conversation about the city's carbon neutrality goals on May 25th, we would like to provide the council with information on carbon dioxide removal. I'm going to hand the presentation off to Ramon Alatorre, our Climate and Energy Coordinator and recent resident expert on carbon dioxide removal.
Great, thank you Nicole. Hello Mayor Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Ramon DC Alatorre and I am pleased today to have the opportunity to discuss the topic of carbon dioxide removal with you all this afternoon. Our goal today is to provide baseline information about carbon dioxide removal, which I will sometimes refer to as CDR. In order to have a more informed conversations between constituents and for evaluating future investments and funding opportunities. This presentation will not include a prescriptive plan detailing the exact carbon dioxide removal portfolio that Flagstaff will need to develop and support over the next nine years. That portfolio will need to be developed in collaboration with local and regional partners and that work will need to get underway in the next year so that initiatives will have time to get established and to scale. So again, today, the goal is to offer information and to start developing a vision for what carbon dioxide removal opportunities might look like. The general flow of the presentation will follow the agenda that you see on the right side of the screen. We'll start by talking about what carbon dioxide removal is. We'll then discuss why carbon dioxide removal is necessary, both from a global and a local perspective. We'll spend some time discussing leadership and market trends in the carbon dioxide removal space. We'll explore what a few peer governments in the Intermountain West Region are doing to pursue carbon dioxide removal and then we'll wrap up. To start, what is carbon dioxide removal or CDR? Carbon dioxide removal refers to the process of removing carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. There are multiple processes that are capable of doing this. There are biological and nature-based approaches. We're all familiar with the fact that trees and other plants remove carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and turn it into biomass. Turns out certain rocks and minerals can also do this, remove carbon dioxide from the air and bind it into their structures. And then there are technological and engineering processes that can perform the same task and there are ways to use these approaches in combination. But before diving into deep, we do want to just acknowledge upfront that while carbon dioxide removal is increasingly looking like something that will be necessary to stabilize the climate, we fully acknowledge that CDR cannot be thought of as a replacement for reducing emissions as quickly as possible. Carbon dioxide removal is not a silver bullet. It should only be considered as part of a both and approach and that rapid reductions need to be prioritized. I've heard it described with the overflowing bathtub metaphor, that we need to turn off the water and we need to speed up the draining. Neither will be sufficient on their own, both will be necessary. But of the two, turning off the water will be faster and more effective than trying to speed up the drain. Likewise, we can achieve reductions far faster than we can scale carbon dioxide removal and the total impact will be greater. Still, given that the tub is already overflowing, in addition to turning off the water, it will also help and be necessary to open the drain. Perhaps the easiest place to start is with the thing we all know about, trees. Trees take carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere and stored in their biomass for decades or centuries. Aforestation is the idea of planting trees in new places where they haven't been historically. Reforestation refers to replanting trees where they previously existed. In certain regions, including many urban areas, planting trees can lead to many benefits, however, including the removal of carbon dioxide. However, I will say this a couple of times, the science suggests that we can't simply plant trees our way out of the problem. Then there are many things that can be done from an agricultural perspective to both reduce emissions from current ag practices as well as to remove carbon dioxide from the atmosphere so that it becomes stored in soils. Additionally, protecting and restoring damaged ecosystems will allow them to better provide all of their many ecosystem services more effectively, including carbon dioxide removal. Some of the benefits of biological carbon dioxide removal is that the maturity of these practices is high. We already know how to do a lot of it. It doesn't require new technology or other breakthroughs to implement and scale. It's also relatively inexpensive. And as previously mentioned, a lot of this work can have co-benefits beyond just carbon dioxide removal. These can include cleaner air, preserving biodiversity, healthier ecosystems, heat abatement in urban environments and much more. There are some limitations and questions though. There is this concept of saturation. Essentially, it means that there is an upper limit to how much impact the method can have. We might consider both regional and global saturation. And again, trees can be a good example. While planting trees can be a good idea in some regions and could be scaled, there are some regions where frankly, the problem is too many trees. Indeed, as we've just heard in previous presentations, that is the issue facing many of the forests surrounding Flagstaff. There is interest in getting biomass out of our forests to reduce fuels and mitigate fire risks. So rather than reforestation, we may be more interested in exploring options that can both support fuels reductions and improve ecosystem health while also contributing to carbon dioxide removal. We've already heard about some of these and I will touch on a couple of them, of these potential options when I get to the technology section. Zooming out from the regional saturation assessments to global saturation, again, the science shows that we can't simply plant trees our way out of the problem. There isn't enough land in the world to accomplish all of the carbon dioxide removal that will be necessary. There is an upper limit on what biological approaches can accomplish. Not to mention the fact that land is valuable and has many competing uses and that forcefully taking land, especially from indigenous peoples in order to use nature-based carbon dioxide removal solutions to try to fix the climate mess that has been made by industrialized nations is simply untenable. And finally, there is the issue of permanence and reversibility. Again, trees are great, but they can be hard to protect. Of course, we think of fire, but human activities, including development, can also reverse biological carbon dioxide removal efforts. Even in the best case scenarios, many trees only live for tens to hundreds of years before they decay and release their carbon back into the atmosphere. All told, the data is telling us that we're needing to look beyond what can be stored in nature-based solutions. As a global community, we need to also explore options that are more permanent and less reversible. Which is where geologic options become interesting. There are, as I mentioned, rocks and minerals that bind to carbon dioxide through natural processes. The idea behind enhanced rock weathering is to speed up those processes. Basically, you might think of mining some of those rocks and minerals, crushing them to increase their surface area and then exposing them in favorable conditions so that they might bind to atmospheric carbon dioxide. Basically trying to facilitate geologic processes on less than geologic time scales. Once bound to these rocks and minerals, the carbon is quite stable and the risk of reversal is relatively low. Additionally, there are some strategies that can support carbon dioxide removal by storing carbon that has been removed from the atmosphere into geologic formations. But they don't actually do the atmospheric removal. Still, it is worth mentioning here because this storage is utilizing geologic formations and the storage is considered relatively permanent. Honestly, perhaps the best way to think of this might be to imagine fossil fuel extraction, but in reverse. We would capture and compress atmospheric carbon dioxide, often through technological means, and then inject it deep underground into geologic formations. Perhaps unsurprisingly, many of the viable injection sites and formations are the same ones that fossil fuels were extracted from. We're basically hoping that we might be able to put the toothpaste back in the tube. Also interesting, some of the companies that might have the inside track for doing this kind of injection and storage might be the companies that previously performed fossil fuel extraction. Indeed, some experts anticipate that the oil and gas majors that will survive the renewable energy landscape of the future will be the ones that transition and change their business model to be one that puts carbon back into the ground. And indeed, some companies are starting to move in this direction, at least a little bit. Just this April, ExxonMobil has proposed deploying carbon capture and storage hubs throughout the United States, including a proposed project near Houston that could potentially store 100 million tons of carbon per year. For reasons I'll discuss in the next slide, this project wouldn't actually count as CDR, but it is an example of geologic strategies being used for permanent storage of carbon dioxide. And since we've started to allude to technology strategies, we might as well make the pivot. There are already technologies that allow for the removal of carbon from point sources. When talking about point sources, it might help to think about smokestacks. These point source technologies are known as carbon capture. And as we've just discussed, there are technologies that would allow for the injection of compressed carbon dioxide into geologic storage. However, whether these carbon capture efforts are categorized as carbon dioxide removal or something different depends on the source of emissions coming out of those smokestacks. If we deploy this technology on power plants and industries that are utilizing fossil fuels, as is the case for the Exxon proposal, it doesn't actually count as carbon dioxide removal. It's more of a cousin. It prevents emissions from getting into the atmosphere, but doesn't actually remove existing carbon from the atmosphere. If we go back to our bathtub analogy, it's not draining the tub, but it's also not quite turning the water off. It's more like keeping the water on and diverting some of it elsewhere. There are robust debates about carbon capture and storage in fossil industries. Many are concerned about what is known as the moral hazard in particular, that this technology and approach will seem to give license to the continued extraction and use of fossil fuels. Many argue that there are other arguably better ways to prevent emissions, to actually turn the water off, not just divert it. Still, others contend that so long as fossil fueled plants and industries are in operation, it would be far better to capture and store millions of tons of carbon than to not. Going beyond point source carbon capture to some technologies that would actually qualify as carbon dioxide removal, we can first start by talking about direct air capture or DAC. Essentially, these are factories that process large volumes of air and pull the carbon dioxide out of it. Once removed, the carbon can be directed to a number of end uses, including injection into geologic formations. One of the limitations associated with DAC is that it is quite energy intensive. For the whole endeavor to be a net positive, that energy will need to be renewable. Also, given that energy costs money, energy intensive approaches like DAC are likely to be more expensive than alternatives that are less energy intensive, even as the technology matures. A far less energy intensive method, I apologize, I haven't been moving my screen. A far less energy intensive method for non-point source carbon capture removal is being developed just down the hill at Arizona State University at the Center for Negative Carbon Emissions. These so-called mechanical trees passively remove atmospheric carbon dioxide in their engineered leaves and then direct the carbon into mineral sequestration, that enhanced rock weathering that I previously mentioned, or to other potential uses. Some benefits of these technological strategies, they require far less space than many biological and nature-based approaches. The mechanical trees, for example, remove carbon dioxide over 1,000 times faster than a biological tree can. The maturity of these various technologies are somewhat mixed. On one hand, submarines and spaceships have been doing technological carbon dioxide removal for decades. Still, the scaling of these approaches is still maturing and from a cost curve reduction standpoint, many technologies are still in the sort of pilot phase of development. To see costs start to come down, it will likely require deployment-led innovations. Now to speak to a couple of approaches that combine the biological, geological and technological CDR strategies. While we previously discussed how point source carbon capture technology paired with fossil fuels would be categorized as a prevention and not as atmospheric CDR, the same technology and approach paired with biological fuels and feedstocks would count as carbon dioxide removal. BECS or bioenergy with carbon capture and storage is a process that does remove atmospheric carbon dioxide because the first step involves biomass removing carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. That biomass is then used to produce energy or heat, but rather than releasing the carbon back into the atmosphere, the emissions are captured using the same point source technology and then stored underground. This results in a net negative emissions process that also generates useful energy or heat. This is another graphic illustrating the BECS process and components. BECS is considered one of the most enticing carbon dioxide removal approaches. Indeed, it is one of the few technological approaches even mentioned and modeled in the reports from the IPCC or Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. The allure of BECS is in large part because it provides both non-fossil energy and heat, which we will need as sources in the future, and it removes carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. We go back to our bathtub analogy, it not only, it not only turns off the water since fossil fuels are not being burned, it also improves the drainage of the bathtub. And as we've heard today, we might also look into bioenergy without carbon capture and sequestration. In this case, the efforts would not likely qualify as a CDR initiative, though they could well reduce emissions, which is also a desired outcome. It will be critical however, to ensure that the biomass feedstock is sustainably managed. It would be a perverse outcome if ecosystems are destroyed or degraded in order to power BECS facilities. If using waste biomass, BECS could represent an opportunity to make beneficial use of biomass that can otherwise be a liability, such as reducing fuels in oversaturated forests. So far, there are a few industrial-scale BECS projects in the world. The first was launched in 2016 in Decatur, Illinois, at a corn ethanol facility. Ultimately, whether BECS project or just a bioenergy project might be appropriate in our region, it will require further investigation and collaboration. Fortunately, as we've heard today, NAU has a lot of people and resources thinking about topics like this, bioenergy and forest management. And there is a lot of potential for advancing discussion on these topics. The final CDR approach that is worth mentioning is known as biochar. Essentially, the idea is to burn waste or liability biomass under particular conditions so that it results in a stable char. You might well think of charcoal. Unlike other biomass that will naturally decompose and return its carbon to the atmosphere, biochar is resistant to decomposition. In addition to its carbon dioxide removal, biochar can have a number of beneficial uses. It is most commonly used as a soil amendment. While different than fertilizer or compost, by adding biochar to soils, especially in combination with compost, it can make the soils more productive. Biochar can also be useful for increasing water retention in soils, something that could be particularly valuable in water-stressed regions like the Southwest. Another potential use or benefit of biochar can once again be for fuels reduction in overgrown forests. The United States Forest Service is driving the development and deployment of the so-called CharBoss. This is a mobile incinerator that can be brought to the forest to process unusable wood waste and turn it into biochar. Compared to the problematic pile burning that we've heard about earlier today from both Neil Chapman and Dr. Nielsen, the CharBoss produces far less air pollution, doesn't scar the ground and results in more char being left behind. That means keeping more of the previously removed carbon out of the atmosphere. The resulting biochar can be spread on site as a soil amendment to aid in the health of the forest soils or transported elsewhere for beneficial use. And while the CharBoss might be considered a bit of a crude unit, biochar production can also be highly controlled and standardized in high-tech facilities, more like a landfill or even a water treatment plant. By carefully managing the feedstock and controlling the burning conditions, people can create designer biochar's to meet various market needs. Again, the US Forest Service has provided funding for multiple biochar facilities in the region over the past few years, including an award of nearly half a million dollars this past funding cycle for a stationary biochar facility in Eager, Arizona. Beyond using waste forest products as a feedstock for biochar production, some municipalities are using biochar facilities to process their digested sludges from wastewater treatment. Another topic we've heard about today. Flagstaff, as you heard, currently applies our digested sludges directly to the land at Wildcat Hill Facility and it is known that we will need to explore other options for managing these sludges in the future. The production of biochar is also certainly compatible with the production of bioenergy. Indeed, in the previous slide for BECS, you may have noticed the reference to biochar on the second graphic. Biochar is even being explored as having the potential for mine site remediation. So clearly, there's tremendous potential for biochar and a lot of folks are interested in producing and supplying it. As a city organization, Flagstaff could contribute to the market development of biochar by exploring the use of it for various city projects, landscaping, community gardens, stream corridor restoration, just to name a few. We might also look to spearhead any number of city-led biochar initiatives. There are numerous market and non-market benefits to be realized, including contributing to our carbon dioxide removal goals. So that wraps up the first section of my agenda today. We've now discussed what carbon dioxide removal is as well as an overview of the landscape of some of the current CDR approaches. Next, I'll take a moment to discuss and revisit why carbon dioxide removal is necessary, both from a global and a local perspective. This first slide considers the global perspective and is admittedly a bit busy with a graph that we could spend a long time unpacking. But the main point is that according to the most recent IPCC reports, all scenarios that limit global warming to 1.5 degrees or 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit will require significant carbon dioxide removal deployment. The horizontal red line that I've added for emphasis represents net zero emissions on a global scale. We are well above that right now. The leftmost vertical red line represents the year 2030 and the rightmost vertical red line represents the year 2050. This graph plots multiple scenarios, again, for limiting warming to 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit. And as you can see, all scenarios envision the world arriving at net zero emissions, sometime around 2050, followed by decades of net negative emissions from the continued use of carbon dioxide removal. Additionally, the exact amount of carbon dioxide removal that will ultimately be required depends largely on the reductions achieved in the next decade. The scenarios that achieve greater reductions by 2030 will ultimately require far less total CDR over the next century. This is shown by scenarios one and two, which do require decades of net negative emissions, but compared to scenarios three and four, which don't achieve the same level of reductions by 2030, scenarios one and two keep things relatively close to the net zero line. This is one of the reasons why this decade is seen as the critical decade for action. Any further delay in the scenarios for limiting warming to 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit begin to fall apart. The Flagstaff Climate Emergency Declaration recognized this reality, which is why 2030 was selected as the target year for achieving carbon neutrality. This is the decade to both accelerate emissions reductions and carbon dioxide removal. We need to both start turning off the water rapidly and start learning how to drain the tub more effectively. The IPCC report goes on to emphasize this second point. Says that unless affordable and environmentally and socially acceptable carbon dioxide removal becomes feasible and available at scale well before 2050, pathways to 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit will become difficult to realize. Essentially, the report is saying that we cannot delay when it comes to developing carbon dioxide removal. It will take time to scale and there will be barriers to navigate. Building further on the global perspective, we have to acknowledge that the world is not going to arrive at net zero emissions in 2050 by having all countries and cities arrive simultaneously. We will not all be able to hold hands and watch as we each individually cross the net zero finish line at the same moment. The global outcomes needed will always be a game of averages. In order for the world to be here at this black dot in 2050, those that can will need to be here at this blue dot. Likewise, in 2030, in order for the world to be here at this black dot, those that can will need to be here. Success on a global scale will require leadership. Leaders will do what is needed first and early. Leaders will willingly pull their fair share and then perhaps more because they can. Leaders will take the necessary actions regardless of what others are doing. Leaders will help others succeed as well as hold them appropriately accountable. The Flagstaff community believes that we can be leaders. It is one of the reasons the community brought forward the Climate Emergency Declaration. Now in a moment, I will be talking more about Flagstaff, the Climate Emergency Declaration and how CDR fits into our pathway. But I do want to pause a moment on this idea of leadership because we do hear a lot of concern about how leadership can seem like a lonely and even scary or disadvantageous position to take. We sometimes hear the sentiment that it doesn't matter what Flagstaff does in the grand scheme of things, where questions like, is anyone else taking this kind of action? And the answer is yes. There are many companies and foundations and governments that are reading the same reports and coming to the same conclusions that our community did when they brought forward the Climate Emergency Declaration. I will highlight a couple of leaders in the CDR space specifically in a few slides that follow, but here are just a few examples to demonstrate that Flagstaff is not alone. Over 1,900 jurisdictions and local governments worldwide have declared a climate emergency and these jurisdictions cover over 800 million global citizens so far. Our own federal government has rejoined the Paris Agreement and set goals for 2030 that are in line with the reductions that the IPCC reports say are necessary. Achieving these reductions will likely require a combination of efforts to both turn down the water and learn how to drain the tub. Prior to the federal government making their announcement, multiple coalitions submit formal notices of support. Flagstaff joined the America's All-In Campaign along with over 160 other local and tribal governments, as well as over 1,300 businesses and investors to support the federal target of 50% reduction. The We Mean Business Coalition comprised of over 400 businesses and investors submitted a public letter to the Biden administration to quote, "call on you to adapt the ambitious and attainable target of cutting greenhouse gas emissions by at least 50% by 2030." And this is just a sample. The world is looking at the early leaders, both large and small, from the European Union to New York City to communities like Flagstaff. And followers are emerging, including the US federal government, from all sectors to become the next wave of leaders. It might be a stretch to say that any major governments have taken their action because of Flagstaff individually, but it certainly appears that many needed the leadership of communities like Flagstaff collectively. Bringing the discussion of why carbon dioxide removal to Flagstaff specifically, it has been referenced multiple times in this presentation, but the carbon dioxide removal conversation has really come to our community's doorstep because of the Climate Emergency Declaration that was adopted by council in June of 2020. This declaration recognized the importance of the next decade as well as the need for leadership. As you well know, the Climate Emergency Declaration included a commitment to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. In order to be carbon neutral, we will first reduce local emissions as much as possible. However, we know that we will still produce emissions in Flagstaff in the year 2030. So in order to be carbon neutral, we will, on an annual basis, measure the emissions produced by our community. That would be represented by the left side of the scale here. We will then need to balance with an equivalent amount of carbon dioxide removal on the right side of the scale in order to have net zero community emissions. Ultimately, the amount of CDR required each year will depend on the emissions reductions achieved. The smaller we can make the left side of the scale each year, the smaller our annual CDR obligation. As it stands now, the draft carbon neutrality plan envisions a significant reduction in emissions by 2030. Still, it is projected that something like 471,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent will still be produced by our community, which means that in order to be carbon neutral, we will need to balance our emissions with an equivalent amount of carbon dioxide removal. At 471,000 metric tons, this would be equivalent to removing the emissions produced by over 100,000 passenger vehicles driven over the course of a year. Still, we should always keep in mind, the smaller that we make the left side of the scale, the smaller our CDR obligation on the right side. We've now covered what carbon dioxide removal is as well as why CDR is necessary from both a global and local perspective. I will now continue to explore the theme of leadership and talk about some recent market trends in the CDR space. The corporate world is clearly starting to recognize the need for carbon dioxide removal development, deployment, scalability and cost reduction. This slide includes just two examples of companies that are approaching carbon dioxide removal in novel ways that are garnering a lot of positive attention and press. They were chosen because they are being recognized as leaders and early adopters in the space. Stripe is a financial tech company that has been in operation since 2009. Microsoft likely doesn't need any introduction. Prior to 2019, both Stripe as well as Microsoft and countless other environmentally and socially minded companies and organizations relied on traditional offset programs to balance their emissions and allow them to claim carbon neutrality. However, for both of these companies, it has become increasingly clear that A, the traditional offset approach will not be sufficient to the problem and B, that new carbon dioxide removal technology and approaches are going to be necessary at scale and soon. So in 2019, Stripe made the commitment to start to move away from these offset programs, committing instead to invest in carbon dioxide removal. According to their press release, they said, quote, "We will seek to purchase negative CO2 emissions at any price per ton, starting immediately. We expect that the best price will initially be very high, almost certainly more than $100 per ton as compared with the $8 per ton we pay for offsets. We don't expect to be able to sequester all of our carbon emissions, both because the relevant technologies are not yet operating at sufficient scale and because it would be financially infeasible for Stripe. And so we commit to spending at least twice as much on carbon sequestration as we do on offsets." Part of Stripe's thesis is that early purchasers can help new carbon removal technologies come down the cost curve and come up the volume curve. They say that experience with manufacturing, learning and experience curves has shown repeatedly that deployment and scale beget improvement, a phenomenon that we see across DNA sequencing, hard drive capacity and solar panels. I would also add batteries to this list. This graph is shown on their website and you can see the cost curves for all of these technologies dropping quickly as a result of investment. Carbon dioxide removal technology will likely require the same investment. Microsoft also updated their commitments and outlined their new approach in 2019. According to their press release, they say, quote, "Solving the planet's carbon issues will require technology that does not exist today." That's why a significant part of That's why a significant part of our endeavor involves putting Microsoft's balance sheet to work to stimulate and accelerate the development of carbon removal technology. Our new Climate Innovation Fund will commit to invest $1 billion over the next four years into new technologies and expand access to capital around the world, to people working to solve this problem. We understand this is just a fraction of the investment needed, but our hope is that it spurs more governments and companies to invest in new ways as well." Now, I want to emphasize that I am not bringing up Stripe and Microsoft. I want to emphasize that I am bringing up Stripe and Microsoft to highlight market trends and examples of corporate leadership in this CDR space. This is not to suggest that Flagstaff adopts Stripe's two-to-one investment ratio or that we try to somehow keep up with Microsoft's investments. The goal is to highlight that serious actors are recognizing the need for serious action and early investment, that companies and businesses, not just climate scientists and local governments, are recognizing that CDR is necessary and that it will require action and investment this decade to mature and become more affordable and scalable. Flagstaff will need to figure out our approach in the coming months and years. But again, we won't be the only ones, and that is exciting from an opportunity and collaboration standpoint. This slide is to note that there are federal incentives and investments already in place. There is the 45Q tax credit, which began in 2008 and was updated in 2018. This tax credit offers incentives of between $35 and $50 per ton for carbon dioxide removal, depending on its final end use. And the Department of Energy announced in March that they will begin investing millions of dollars to advance air pollution capture, though this amount will need to increase substantially. It is widely acknowledged that the investment tax credits for solar and wind were instrumental in spurring widespread deployment and bringing down the costs for these solutions over the past decade. While clearly the federal government is a far bigger mover of markets than Flagstaff will ever be, the point here is to emphasize that there are existing federal incentives and investments that can be leveraged and potentially built upon, similar to how governments utilize the solar and wind investment tax credits to advance projects in their regions. And then there are foundations that are also offering support and funding for carbon dioxide removal innovation. The X Prize is worth mentioning because it has been in the recent news cycle and has been causing some buzz. The Musk Foundation is offering $100 million in prizes for scalable approaches that have a path to low-cost removal and storage. Any carbon negative solution is eligible, nature-based, direct air capture, oceans, mineralization, or anything else that achieves net negative emissions, sequesters carbon dioxide durably, and shows a sustainable path to achieving low costs at gigatonne scale. The sustainability section is also applied for support and funding from a Bloomberg philanthropies program for a city-led biochar initiative. We don't yet know if we will be awarded. But the real point, again, in all of these slides is to emphasize that any local incentives or investments that we might consider when working to develop our portfolio of carbon dioxide removal projects wouldn't necessarily have to perform the whole lift in trying to attract and fund carbon dioxide removal projects, companies, and opportunities. We may be able to combine efforts and resources with other companies, governments, and foundations. There are stakeholders that are interested in collaborations and could bring matching funds for these kinds of projects and investments. We also know there are local businesses, opportunities that are emerging. These were discussed by Neil Chapman in the previous presentation. And now we'll move on to a quick discussion on what some local and regional governments are doing in the CDR space. We'll consider three local governments in the Intermountain West. These will be Boulder County in Colorado, Park City in Utah, and Marin County in California. Boulder County has been working with local universities and stakeholders, including producers, tenants, and ranchers to increase carbon dioxide removal and storage through carbon farming methods, such as adding compost to soil, planting trees, and using cover crops. In 2017, they announced a pilot project to analyze carbon dioxide removal feasibility on county lands. One year later, the feasibility study came back indicating the potential to achieve as much as 170,000 metric tons of reductions per year through a suite of practices they refer to as carbon farming. Boulder is also interested in exploring biochar. And while the 2018 feasibility study acknowledges this interest, it does not quantify the potential biochar impacts as there was insufficient information at the time. Given the expertise that exists here in Flagstaff, particularly at NAU, it is conceivable that a similar collaboration and study could be explored. Additionally, we will need partners to envision and execute pilot projects that might be able to scale, as well as expertise to assess their potential for impact. The sustainability section has also had preliminary conversations with faculty at NAU and with various regional stakeholders that have strong interest in developing biochar markets and production. Park City also has carbon neutrality by 2030 goals. Rather than CDR, Park City frames their negative emissions initiatives as regeneration. They say that regeneration is, the emissions that Park City cannot eliminate will be balanced by removing carbon from the atmosphere and storing it in soils and biomass, and essentially CDR. Park City has over 9,000 acres of open space on which they have plans to develop and pursue measures for various regenerative agricultural practices. Flagstaff currently has over 3,000 acres of open space, as well as over 8,000 acres of land out at the Red Gap Ranch that could offer potential for similar regenerative initiatives. Additionally, Park City is doing some exciting things with their GIS department to determine the carbon dioxide removal throughout the city. The city of Flagstaff could look into our own GIS staff and work with NAU to develop similar methods and protocols. And finally, Park City is another city in the Mountain West that has high interest in biochar. In 2019, Park City was among eight communities to receive a Leader and Community Resilience Program Award from the National League of Cities. And the final example of local government pursuing CDR initiatives is Marin County in California. Their Marin Carbon Project, which is part of the Marin County Climate Action Plan, is a consortium of ag agencies, nonprofits, producers, and governments. The project launched in 2013 on three pilot ranches. As of 2020, the Marin Resource Conservation District had completed 20 carbon farm plans, and $1.5 million in state grants had been awarded to Marin Ranchers to assist the implementation of carbon farming practices across 16 different regions. By 2030, Marin is aiming for over 55,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide removal per year and storage through these projects. Which brings me to the end of the presentation today. In order to wrap, I'll first mention that the sustainability section will be back in front of council in two weeks, on May 25, at which time we will update council on the Draft Carbon Neutrality Plan and a host of community conversation. Adoption of the plan will be considered at a later date, tentatively scheduled for June 15. Neither the conversation on the 25th nor the adoption in June will offer a prescriptive plan for carbon dioxide removal portfolio that Flagstaff will develop over the next nine years. Again, that work will require developing regional partnerships, identifying opportunities for collaboration on CDR projects and funding. At this time, we have a sense of how much CDR is likely to be necessary, and so now we need to start doing the groundwork to stand up and support local CDR projects to meet this obligation. Similar to Boulder, we expect that part of this development will likely include conducting feasibility studies on various project proposals. And then we will need to start to deploy pilot projects in the next few years with an eye towards scaling in order to meet our needs. One thing we do know, it pays to be proactive. Time and again, we see that it is the communities that have done the groundwork that are able to take advantage of opportunities for funding, for collaboration, or otherwise. By adopting the Climate Emergency Declaration and this kicking off the discussion about carbon dioxide removal in our community, we have made our interests clear to potential collaborators. We are positioning ourselves to be uniquely prepared to take advantage of opportunities as they arise. And with that, I will say thank you. If the council is interested in continuing the discussion, I would be happy to listen, as well as to answer any questions as I am able.